Excellent. Thank you very much. I will bang the gavel because it says to do so on my sheet. Good evening and welcome everyone to our January 25th, 2023 regular hybrid planning commission meeting. Welcome to 2023 everyone if I haven't seen you already. My name is Dan Hubbell. I am tonight's chair and tonight's meeting is being brought to you both in person here at City Hall and via Zoom. Thank you for joining us this evening, whether you are remote or in person. If you wouldn't mind, if all the commissioners could please have your microphones turned on and Deputy City Clerk Deb Estrada will be calling the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Boatsman, present. Commissioner Curry.
Here.
Commissioner Accused.
Here.
Commissioner Rishi.
Here.
Commissioner Reggitt.
Here.
Vice Chair Murphy.
Here.
And Chair Hubbell.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have a quorum, so we will move forward on the agenda. Our next item of business will be appearances for the public. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the commission about issues of concern. I don't see anyone here in the audience this evening, but Deb, is there anyone online who has signed up for appearances?
No, sir.
Hearing there are none, we will move on from appearances. First item on the agenda under regular business will be the approval of the minutes of November the 9th and December the 14th. Do I have a motion to approve? We'll take these quickly one by one. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of November the 9th? Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Rishi and seconded by Commissioner Accused. Are there any comments, corrections, or updates? I think this had been sent back, right, for a couple of updates. Were those adequately addressed, Carolyn? I think you're the one that suggested those. Okay. Hearing no additional comments, all in favor of approval of the minutes from November 9th, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes from November 7th or November 9th, sorry, pass seven to zero. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of December the 14th? So moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments, corrections, or questions?
Sheriff, if I could just ask, I'm sorry, my eyes were looking down. Who made the motion?
Oh, sorry. Moved by Commissioner Rishi and seconded by Commissioner Boatsman.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing no comments, look, checking up on the screen online, I see no one. All those in favor of approval of the minutes from December the 14th, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes from December the 14th are approved, seven to zero. Excellent. With that, we are quickly to item number two related to the capital facilities element and our utilities element. To see Adam Zach is here from the city staff to work with us. This is a second reading. There were some, I think, comments and things that you've incorporated into this draft that we reviewed. So Adam, I will give it to you. I'm assuming you're going to go through some of those changes and then it looks here just for everyone's expectation setting action this evening is just continued discussion and any additional comments for Adam, but there will be no action taken.
Great, thank you. Yeah, so this is the second touch on the capital facilities and utilities elements. We looked at these last month in December. And at that meeting, we gave you a quick, staff gave you a quick walkthrough of the proposed changes. Again, those amendments were primarily focused on maintaining consistency with the Growth Management Act and the recently updated King County countywide planning policies. We had a comment period that went through January 13th and we received two comments during the comment period from planning commissioners. The response to the comments was detailed in the memo dated January 18th. We provided a comment matrix in that memo, so you can see most of the comments were relatively minor wording changes or comments on some of the introductory text. But then there were a few comments on policy issues, and so we'll be taking a look at those today, the more substantive comments from that comment period. So I'll walk you through those here in a moment. Once we get through the comments, I guess I have to unmute myself. Zoom is telling me that. Okay, hopefully everyone can hear me. So once we get through the comments tonight, unless there are any lingering issues, we'll be planning on this being our public review draft. So same as when we got through with the land use and transportation elements, we'll kind of table this for a couple of months. And then gather public comments when we have our comprehensive plan open house later this year. And then we'll come back to the planning commission with those comments and you'll be able to review the elements before holding your public hearing on the overall comprehensive plan update. Just a quick note too, or a quick reminder. So the the scope of work that was assigned for these two elements was was fairly narrow and really focused just on those amendments that are needed to maintain our Growth Management Act compliance and to remain consistent with those countywide planning policies. So we're not necessarily through this process, we're not looking to really like expand the policy direction in the two elements. That's just helpful to note here at the, before we get into it. I'm going to open up the the memo and we'll just work through the couple of more substantive comments here. I have to remember to share my screen on Zoom. So let's see, everybody should be able to see this now. So this is page two of the memo. The first comment was on policy 1.4 in.
Sorry, Adam, I just want to double check. Can either of you online give me a signal that you guys can see the shared screen? Excellent. Great.
Thanks. So the first policy that we'll be looking at is policy 1.4, and this is on page 30 of the capital facilities element. The originally, the comment is a pretty minor change. It's mostly a stylistic change. It would add the phrase, "The city should" to the beginning of the policy. This wouldn't necessarily change the intent or implementation of the policy. It's more of a style point. There's any discussion on that, we can have that, or if you're ready to provide input, I would take that now too.
I don't see anybody raising their hand for.
Okay, well, in that case, I think we'll, we can just move ahead with the proposed change there with the adding the city should to the beginning of the policy there. It makes it more stylistically consistent with the other, the other policies in this section.
Okay, do you need a, I guess from a do you want a consensus vote on any of this? Do like, do we need that, or is this just more of an informative? This is the change based on feedback and it looks like there's both feedback from us as well as public feedback. So have you marked that? I'm not sure.
If it matters, but. No, we haven't received any public comments.
Okay.
On these. And in terms of the process, consensus is fine for this because this isn't a final action. So, you know, provided no one would block consensus, that that would be fine. Yeah.
Okay.
Moving to the next comment. So on page two of the capital facilities element, lines 38 and 42. There is a paragraph and Commissioner Raghead has proposed striking the paragraph. I have the paragraph pulled up here, or you can see it in the draft there. And at this point, the, you can, if you want to strike the paragraph, we can do that. If you'd like to propose an amendment to the paragraph, we can also do that here.
Can I kind of explain where I was coming from with it? Like, I mean, I obviously agree, we, we, the city's committed to reducing greenhouse gas emissions. If it is the right thing to do, I just thought that having this here sounded kind of like a plea. And I think that perhaps may put like a, you know, small door opening to someone being able to try to disagree with them and say like, oh, yeah, greenhouse gases, you know, the city says they're urgent, but what about hunger, you know, world peace? I know that's an extrapolation, but that's, that was the thinking I had reading that paragraph. I mean, at the end of the day, city's committed to doing it. That's what we have to do. So that was, that was my thinking there.
Do we know the history of the inclusion of this, Adam? Is that, does it come out of the, the county growth policies or?
Well, so this, this section of the, of the element is giving some background on, so it's a non-regulatory part of the element. And this piece of it was added to provide some of that context of how we got to where we are with our climate change planning. And so it came out of the Climate Action Plan, but it's not necessarily specific language lifted from that Climate Action Plan. Inspired by.
Got it. So there's two options basically suggested would be potentially removing it altogether. And then it looks like there's some alternative language that you've provided in the packet. Are there any other thoughts or comments on this, Kate? Yeah, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, my voice is a little worse today. I, I don't think this should be removed. This is the field that I work in and I don't see any of the statements in this as political. They're well documented facts. I agree with the staff report, and I think it's important for the community to understand why we do the things we do. We have rationale for a lot of other sections, and I think a lot of people actually aren't aware that we are having changes in river volumes or rainfall, and they aren't aware that that is affecting the salmon economy. It's affecting tribal economies. There's a lot of reasons why people need to be aware of this, and that reduced snowpack is could be really detrimental to us generally, all of us people, as well as to habitat. So I think it's important to keep it in personally.
Anyone here, Victor?
I just have a question. Can you just remind us, because I don't remember this? How does this tie in with the capital facilities plan with the, with the time?
So this is in a section of the plan or of the element that's talking about the intersection between our capital facilities and our climate change planning efforts on, on page two there. And so again, it's, it's creating that connection between, or the background for the policies that follow related to climate change.
Yeah, the section itself is titled sustainability, so it's environments generally. Carolyn, let's take your other comment.
You know, it seems like a pretty good explanation for the climate planning that we're doing. So I think it's really good to, you know, always in those introductory sections, we usually say why we're doing what we're doing. So I think it's a pretty good paragraph. I would, I would recommend keeping it.
Okay, and online, now you're both small, it looks like Commissioner Curry, you raised your hand.
Yeah, so I would equate where that paragraph sits as more of a foreword in a book, right? By some author that was invited to make some, something in a book for another author and it's, I don't know, it's, I, I just, I'm having a hard time articulating what I'm seeing. I could see why the thought could be to remove it. And ultimately, I don't think that it impacts the tone or the meaning or the intent of the document itself, right? It could go either way. I don't know, I just, I just don't think it impacts it as much as, as one might say or think, so. Yeah, I would be in the middle, I guess.
Okay. Commissioner Murphy, anything from you or?
I tend to agree with, with Carolyn and Kate that it's useful background. I think Commissioner Curry is correct that it really doesn't have any material impact. You know, you could characterize it as somewhat political, but this is a political document to the extent that it's setting policy. So I would vote to leave it in.
Okay. Given all the commentary, then I think for the sake of moving forward, I think I have four people, but is there consensus to retain this? If you're in sort of in favor of retaining it as is, give me a thumbs up and all. I've got one, two, three, four, five. Great. So we'll, we'll move forward and leave it in there. And again, if there are folks listening online and have additional commentary on this, please bring that as we take this to what is that, public hearing?
All right, so those are the only two major comments on the capital facilities element. So now we'll move to the utilities element. The first comment on the capital, or sorry, on the utilities element is on policy 4.2 on page eight. There was a proposal to add a new policy 4.2. And I didn't insert it into the draft, so you'll want to take a look at the, at the memo itself for the, the policy language. And essentially, the question here is, does the planning commission want to insert this policy into the utilities element? As noted in the memo, this would create a new, this proposed policy would create a directive for a new city action to develop and implement water quality improvement, improvement at the watershed level. The, the staff recommendation on this one is to, we can is to either not include it, or we would need to soften it a bit to make it less directive so that it's not creating that policy direction to undertake a new action. Because this would be a little outside of the, the scope, well, this would be outside of the scope that was assigned to the planning commission for the, for the comp plan update. So the, the question here is include, include this policy or we can amend it or not include it.
Okay, Carolyn, I know this was your feedback. Do you want to start with any comments?
Sure. I was inspired in thinking about this by Kate's comments at our November meeting about the Clean Water Healthy Habitat Program that King County leads. And I thought that, that this was a program that was open to the participation of other cities. And I wasn't sure if Mercer Island was participating in that or had opportunities to participate in it. But anyway, that's how I started looking into this. I can see your concern about, you know, adding a new policy outside of the scope of work. Leave it to me to jump outside the scope of work. In any case.
It's never happened.
Never happened before. But I do think it's generally a good policy and the city probably does a little bit of that already. And I think it should say so in the comp plan that that is the case. So I guess what I could suggest is definitely softening the policy. I would, you know, like to propose an amendment to it if, if I could go with that. I'll just throw out there what I would say and then, you know, everybody have at it. I would just change it to say, "The city should, when possible, collaborate with blah, blah, blah," and leave it all the same. Okay, that's, that's just all I had to say.
Sure, Kate.
I agree with Carolyn that a policy is important to add here to address non-point source pollution. That's the next one, as well as stormwater management generally. And I appreciate the staff's notes that the county and the city follow the stormwater management plan and have their, each city has to adopt theirs and they have to be in line with ecology's goals. I think the county's Clean Water Healthy Habitat Initiative takes that a step further and it calls for regional planning. Regional planning is important for a lot of reasons, especially because it can save us money as we're not reinventing the wheel of coming up with new programs. So after our last meeting, I did a little bit of research and read through the Clean Water Healthy Habitat Plan. And the first five-year period, which ends in 2025, is really internal. It's the county realigning its own programs, so there isn't redundancy in creating new things. It's trying to be more efficient government. So as an example, they're doing some capital project team integration. And then it says the next five-year period, which this comp plan update will overlap with, will involve that engagement of the cities. So I have some proposed language. If, if stuff is challenged by the language that Carolyn proposed, which would be to, can I say it?
Yeah.
Okay, which would be collaborate with King County to support implementation of regional water quality planning strategies such as the Clean Water Healthy Habitat Strategic Plan. And then it's just sort of a policy direction opening us to, when the county halfway through this comp plan starts working with cities, we've already got a plan in mind to work with them on that. It's not as detailed as Carolyn's and not as specific, so. And it puts the, it puts the onus on King County to make the program. But that might not be a bad thing. I don't know. I'm happy either way.
Adam, does that language sort of address the staff concern around the directive of the original language?
Yes, I think that that's, that's broad enough and it's, it's not directing a specific action. It's encouraging us to, or requiring us to collaborate with King County. So I don't think that's as, I, I don't think that's as big a departure from the, the scope in that regard.
Okay, let me take some other comments and we'll come back. I'll go to Victor and then I'll go back to Adam.
Not a comment, but a question for you. Does it also remain within this, that narrow scope that we talked about in terms of the changes that we're making here to the plant? Does it, does it meet that requirement of narrow scope as well?
I believe so. I, I think that the, the, the policy that Kate or Commissioner Accused is proposing is a is not directive because it's not saying we're going to do this specific project of developing an implementation strategy. It's about collaborating with an implementation strategy that's already occurring at, that's at the county level. And in all, in all likelihood, the city would participate in that program anyway. But this is laying out that we will do that as they roll forward in the future.
I, I like the direction that Commissioner Accused's suggestion goes in. Like when I read, when I read this, I was kind of, oh, where did this come from? Is it a CPP? No, are we going to have to create this, you know, bring everyone together to collaborate? I, I missed the part about the CWHH. So I, I think that, that acronym should definitely be mentioned here. I was, I would kind of suggest an even, you know, softer one is like, let's, let's encourage participation or information sourcing from clean water, healthy habitats. Like that way, it's like, okay, we're encouraging. But if people don't, people decide to not want to participate in it, which wouldn't make much sense. At least we can still encourage getting information from it. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of valuable information there. But yeah, I, I think we, whatever we do, we ought to mention CWHH because as written proposes, that's kind of, where is this coming from? What do we need to do?
Okay, online, do either of you, Michael or Commissioner Curry?
Nope. Yeah, I, I would support the language that Kate has proposed. Like, I think that's a much better way to go because I think Carolyn's language was good and well intentioned, but I, I agree with the staff that it would appear to, to create a new obligation and we should be joining in with what the county is doing as that process unfolds.
Okay, Carolyn, any?
Could we get that policy stated again, please? I'm really not sure what.
I was, I was going to have her reread it. So yeah, that was.
I don't know.
That was, you were reading my mind, a good next step.
Not agreeing to.
So if you wouldn't mind, and then maybe, Adam, if you're able to type that out, I don't know how quick you are. I'm a horrible typist, so.
But I know it starts with collaborate.
Maybe Kate can go slowly and we'll type this out real quick.
Collaborate with King County to support implementation of regional water quality planning strategies, comma, such as the Clean Water, comma, Healthy Habitat Strategic Plan.
I was doing so well there. Great. It's the one involved here. Okay, I've heard a few folks in favor of this direction. Any additional comments?
Adam, I would, I would still say we go a little softer and say like, let's encourage collaboration. You know, if we don't collaborate, we don't meet this goal. If we encourage it, then at least we put it out there for, I don't know, for people to think about, at least. But yeah, like getting Clean Water Healthy Habitat written down. I like that part of it.
Okay, Carolyn?
I would suggest perhaps instead to just say the city should collaborate with, just something like that, instead of, or something. I guess that's what I would say.
Okay, so I think that's kind of what Adam is suggesting as well. So let's add that just for the sake of discussion and okay, so that's reflected on the screen. Any other additional comments from either online or? Victor, no, I saw you nodding your head.
I'm supportive of the changes.
Great. All right, so seeing no other comments, can I just get a thumbs up that everyone is good with moving forward with that change? Great. All right, what a way to write on the fly. I usually hate doing that, but that worked out.
Surprisingly efficient. Great. So the next policy is another proposed new policy, policy 4.3. This is related to non-point source pollution. The proposed policy is shown on the screen here. It would read, "Implement programs and projects to reduce non-point source pollution from existing development." And the staff commentary and recommendation on this is largely the same as 4.2 with regards to the scope, the scope of work for this. For this compliment update.
So as we, hearing that feedback and as we're discussing it, should we just start by, you know, what are people's thoughts if we were to add a similar response to this? Folks have something they've already written along the lines of consider implementation of programs or something like that? Adam?
I've got a question. Does Clean Water Healthy Habitat already cover kind of ideas for reducing non-point pollution? Or to be determined?
Maybe recognize.
Yeah, if you have, if you have an answer. Because I don't know.
It does, but so do our existing storm, stormwater planning documents. I think what this does, what I like, what this policy does and where I think a lot of government programs fall short is that we tend to focus stormwater management. And where I think a lot of government programs fall short is that we tend to focus stormwater management planning on new construction. Whereas, you know, the vast majority of that pollution is coming from existing construction. And I know home builders and developers think it's very unfair. Not that a lot of people are sympathetic to that, but what I care about is that it's not effective. You know, it's effective in not creating more, but it doesn't address that initial insult, which was, you know, cutting 95% of the trees in Washington's virgin forests, right? Addressing a new construction here and there is not going to address that. Single-family housing and multifamily housing does have impacts on the environment and we have to consider what's existing too. So Clean Water Healthy Habitat, they did some analysis. They looked at the and they really highlighted that what we're spending money on isn't addressing like the largest portion of the pollution, which is from existing development. So I like that Carolyn proposed this. I I share the staff concern that it's a new program that we don't have money for. And I kind of like in line with my other statement, I think we should ask, you know, if King County is already engaging in the work of developing policies and programs, they've got a lot larger staff, a lot more money than Mercer Island. Let them do the heavy lifting and we can pick and choose what we like to support this effort when that programming has been created. But I wonder, you know, I think this point about non-point is really important. I think it's important for the public to understand that too. So I wonder if there's a way of adding non-point source pollution into the prior policy we just thumbs upped. Like you could say, can you go back to what you typed down?
Yeah.
You could say the city should collaborate with King County to support implementation of regional stormwater quality planning strategies such as non-point pollution source control. I don't know. That's too many such as's, but eight. I appreciate that Carolyn highlighted that. I think it's really important and I don't think it's covered fully in our current planning. So I don't know, since we already know that's a problem, I don't know if we want to address it as a line item here in addition to let's work with CWHH.
Victor?
So in reading the staff comments on this, I'm actually confused about the response you gave me on the last question. My question last time was, is this beyond the scope of what the planning commission is being asked to do? And wh- what I heard from you is no. But I'm hearing this or in reading the staff comments, I'm hearing this is. So can you explain what the difference between this one and the previous one is? Or maybe or and it's very possible that I either misunderstood your response.
I I think there was a miscommunication. Yeah. So the the original, the previous policy as proposed, the not not the one that we reached consensus on, but this this first one that's not highlighted. That's creating a directive for a specific city action and that that part of it is beyond the scope of of what was assigned. In the same way, the proposed fault policy 4.2 is creating a policy directive to implement programs and projects to address this specific piece.
Got it.
So this is another one where an alternative could soften this if if it was something more along the lines of like collaborate with King County to address non-point source pollution from existing development or something like that. That wasn't saying that we're going to take a a specific action in this way, that that would be a way to bring this back within the the bounds.
Can you write that down, Adam? I like what you just said. Not to put you on point. But at least it's a starting point for.
So it'd be collaborate with. Something along those lines.
Carolyn?
Yeah, so I've got a number of thoughts about some of what we're talking about here. I think that you know, we already have a policy encouraging collaboration with King County to address, you know, stormwater issues on a regional basis. But in this case, I think that what we're missing, even if we do collaborate with King County, is our own emphasis on non-point source pollution on on Mercer Island. So regardless of collaboration, we we still need to do our own work on that. And and while I understand that this is not a policy directive that can be included the way that I suggested, I would suggest that we keep the policy, but soften it so that it it isn't directive to starting a new program. We have an eight-year comp plan coming up here based on what we, you know, what is finally adopted. And over that long period of time, you know, the city should be beginning to move in the direction of addressing non-point source pollution more effectively. You know, so I would suggest to soften it by saying consider implementation of programs and projects to reduce non-point source pollution from existing development. Recognizing that we have the larger the larger collaboration with King County and other cities as a lakeside community addressed in the other in the other policy. That would be my suggestion.
Okay, I see Vice Chair Murphy has his hand up.
Yeah, the question I had was exactly what non-point source pollution is this aimed at? Because, you know, stormwater management plan require substantial work for new development. But this is targeting existing structures, I assume. And so what exactly are we trying to solve here? What's the problem?
Yeah, I'll go to you. I'll I'll note on page four of six in the packet. There's actually a definition there.
Yeah, I I I read it.
Okay, I just want to make make sure I'm I agree with you. It's not perfectly clear if to interpret. It's like a a negative, anything that's not one of these things.
Yeah.
Carolyn, I I says she has a thing and then Kate after that.
So you know, anything that is not a point source, you know, coming out of a pipe is a non-point source. We're talking fertilizers, roof treatments, car washing, pet waste, runoff from streets, you know, from from the operation of brakes and and leaks from your garbage truck. I mean, it's it's just massive amounts of other things. And there are ways, you know, have been researched and determined that these can be begin to be addressed. And while we can't probably solve it all, we can begin to move in that direction and make progress over a long period of time. Maybe Kate has something to add?
Okay.
I sure do. Wait, I'm not supposed to talk directly to you. I'm trying to follow the rules. So I'm wondering like I almost feel like this consider is so you know, it's like wishy-washy. It's like consider adding resources. You know, I I think it's I think it's good that it softens it, but I'm also wondering if if you can do this, if you can accomplish the goal without creating a new work program. So I know we get communications from the utilities. We get communications from the city. We have a communications manager. And I wonder if there might be an opportunity to say integrate integrate. I don't know. Educational messaging to the try it on the fly here, like into existing projects and programs like integrate.
Or maybe provide as the verb?
Yeah. Provide, provide public information about controlling non-point source pollution on residential properties in existing city projects and programs.
Or through or or
PPP.
I didn't I didn't catch the last bit of that. Sorry. Provide public information about controlling non-point source pollution on.
In in existing projects and programs.
There was a residential development in there somewhere.
Yeah, on yeah. So it may between pollution and in on residential property. Yeah, from residential properties. And providing public information, it it almost sounds like a new program too. And I think what I was trying to imply was that you could integrate messages, but maybe that's the same thing. It's the same thing.
So I would just change the in on line two to through and then city projects and programs.
And I don't know if that still meets number Commissioner Boatsman's intent, but I'd like to hear that we can keep workshopping it. Adam?
Adam. Um, so yeah, I I I like the idea of info, but I'm I'm still like Commissioner Boatsman mentioned a few examples and I went to the King County Gov website for CWHH and they talk about pick up your dog waste, wash your car at a car wash. So why don't we just, you know, point people from the city website, just go there and specify it there, be done with it, not try to you know, insert it into multiple plans and stuff. Just let's put a link on the city website to here. Here's here. Here's where you can get that information and we're done. We don't have to worry about making sure it shows up in every work plan or every document. Get the info and, you know, lead lead the horse to water.
So I think, I mean, I I interpret what Kate proposed as exactly that, right? That's an avenue that we can use to do that. I'm not sure that that says we have to do it for everything. It's just, you know, we have existing pro- programs and projects. The website is a program of the city, if you think of it in those terms. So I mean, I think that's a great idea and one way to address that. But I don't know if that gets to the original question, which is, does that address what Carolyn is trying to?
Well, I was, I we have had lots of education about avoiding non-point source pollution for gee, 30, 40 years. You know, it's been, you know, goes out there. It's around pass out brochures at the farmer's market. I mean, there's a lot of that out there. It's only effective to a certain extent. Maybe it can be improved. But I I had in mind more, you know, more active work than that. Say, for example, the city is is repaving a certain arterial road. The way that things are constructed can collect and treat stormwater coming off of that road and and clean up a source as they go. And cities do this kind of thing all the time. I was very surprised to not see a policy to that effect in our existing comp plan, but to the extent that the city may already do that or should be encouraged to do that. I I'm talking, I'm thinking, you know, more projects and programs. Education is a program, however, and I, you know, think that the wording that I have there includes, you know, education. But I do think the policy would need to be softened, so. And I I think consider is is an all right word because, you know, it appears in our comp plan a lot of times. It gives cover essentially for things that the city, you know, decides to do. It says, okay, we have this encouragement to do this kind of thing. So, you know, what we're doing makes some sense. It agrees with our comp plan. So yet if you don't say consider and it's too strong, then you you have to go out there and, you know, implement a a new program. So I think softening it and and leaving it you know, as it is, would be more what the city should be doing more of.
All right, I will, just to move this along, I'll give my two cents, which is, I think all three of these have merits. But when I look at one, I believe it encompasses the other two. And I think this is what Carolyn is getting to. I think if you look at number one, consider implementation of programs and projects to reduce non-point non-point source pollution from existing development. That implies that collaboration could be one method by which you a program or a project that you could either join into or adopt. And the same with public information campaigns and programs could be enabled by that first one. So you know, my view of it is that's actually the most inclusive. It actually it it speaks to all three of them because I do think that they all three have merits in the way that they're written. So I think I would be inclined to move in that direction just because it tends to be more out there. I saw Commissioner Curry first and I'll come back to you, Adam.
Yeah, I I would agree with that statement in that and to keep it consistent, I think we were putting the city at the lead edge of the sentence. Something along the the city should consider implementation of programs and projects to reduce, right? So that would be, I think, kind of where everybody's headed to. After hearing everybody talk about it.
So I think that's what we did, Adam, in the last one is at the beginning of that sentence, the city should consider, which I think is fine.
Adam, a real quick suggestion there, I would scratch from existing development. The example given by Commissioner Bozeman was building a road, right? So if I'm thinking if we're repaving a road or building it. Okay, maybe we're correcting something that's already there, but yeah, I'd I'd scratch the last three words. Just then if it's building a new road, okay, we'll consider it or consider dealing with existing.
I'll go Kate and then I'll come back to you.
I was actually thinking about going in the opposite direction. And and saying, I I I do hear all the points that I think they're 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 valuable. I was gonna say add existing residential development. Because I think that's the big missing, you know, we have a lot of things for roads. We have a lot of BMPs for roads and things like that. And I appreciate the example Commissioner Bozeman provided, but I think the missing element really is resident, existing residential development. And I don't know if that would be acceptable to folks or not.
Adam's guess, yeah. Just a point here, if if we were to drop from existing development, that would make the policy more expansive, it would include both new and existing. Unless we're specifically trying to call out one, one specific thing, the more the more narrow you make that part of the of the policy, the more it's going to be focused on that one thing as opposed to it sounded from from the conversation, it sounds like non-point source pollution is the topic to be addressed here. And by broadening it out, that would be more inclusive of different sources, but obviously it's the particularly.
If you wanna, if you wanna overcomplicate it, that's one direction to go.
Already very well.
Sorry, Carolyn.
Sure. I I I think it's very important to have this phrase in there from existing development. That would be the intent of my proposal was, you know, we do have the the ecology manual and the city's stormwater plan and regulations for new development, which are maybe imperfect, but a far cry from, you know, things that have been built 50, 60 years ago. So I think I think it's the existing development is is the missing link. And then I do think keeping it broad is really important rather than you know, trying to but you know, refer just to neighborhoods and we have a lot of kinds of places in our city. We have parks, we have neighborhoods, we have, you know, business areas, we have and and there's non-point sources of pollution and old development in all of those places. So I I think it would be important to keep it broad. One tiny little suggestion. I would suggest not saying the city should because this whole comprehensive plan directs the city. I I don't think we need to pre- pre preface any statements with the city. So.
I'm happy to go with whatever's consistent. I'm not seeing it in the context of the rest of the document, so.
If I could make a recommendation, I think for this, because we've had a couple of different drafts, it might be cleanest to make a motion and have this decided by a motion so that we have kind of the the
and have this decided by a motion so that we have kind of the, the draft language. And then again, we can, we can workshop this a bit more when we come back for our tune-up meeting in the fall. But this would, if, if it were added, we would then have it to consider almost as though like a placeholder or something like that, too. Okay, before we get to that, two things, one, actually just pulled up the, the inline document and we actually in all of the other four point one through four point five. One of the editorial edits we did was we removed the city shall or the city should from all of them. As we're simplifying the language, so I would say that's probably why we're defaulting to that, because that's how everything was written before. So just for consistency, I think we'll, we'll remove that since we are literally have a draft where we're doing that to everything. So from a consistency standpoint, I think that's a good call out, Carolyn. And then number two, I see Commissioner Curry, you still have your hand up? Is that from before or do you have another comment?
Before apologies.
All right, no worries. I just want to be inclusive, make sure I wasn't missing you on that. Okay, so we've gone back and forth on a few different ones. Does someone want to offer a motion on one of the options that's on the board? I saw Carolyn go first.
I would be glad to do that.
A second.
Let's hear which one she's gonna propose.
I propose a new policy four point three as follows. Consider implementation of programs and projects to reduce non-point source pollution from existing development.
Okay, you second that?
I'd like to second that motion.
All right. It has been moved by Commissioner Boatsman and seconded by Commissioner Accuse. Any additional comments or I think we've run the wheel, but I just want to hear any last. Okay, seeing none, all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed? I hear not Commissioner Curry, was that a yea or nay for you?
Opposed.
Opposed. So I have motion passes six to one.
Two.
Sorry, so just a point of order.
Yes.
We've been doing thumbs up along the way and we did a motion here. Can you just clarify where?
So I, I, in Adam's case here, we had three different items up there, and I think he was using this as an opportunity for us to make sure that we've been explicit for the record in which decision that we came to. It wouldn't necessarily be necessary, but as a formality, I think it would be offer clarity to both the staff and anyone listening to the recording. Kind of, thanks.
Great. We're almost there. Moving now to another proposed new policy. This would be a new utility policy five point one zero. This will be on page eleven of the draft utilities element. And the proposed policy is to ensure that providers of solid waste recycling and compost collection services comply with city regulations. Assist residents with concerns about these services when possible. So it, as with the last couple of new policies, we can include this in the draft or elect not to or propose an alternative. What I pointed out in the staff recommendation is that we address code enforcement, our code enforcement program through the city code. And those provisions and directions are better suited to that are suited to kind of directing our code enforcement program. And then also that a part of that, a big part of the code enforcement program is helping the community when they have a concern over code enforcement. I hear the code enforcement officer often advising the public on the code and code enforcement issues. We sit next to each other. So I, that's, that's the only thing. I don't think that this is necessarily, I don't think there's a problem with this in terms of the scope. This isn't necessarily directing us to do something new. So this isn't, it isn't a concern in that regard.
But to reiterate, sorry, the staff recommendation would be to not include this, just because it's sort of addressing. It, it's addressing a thing that we have already, we already addressed and is kind of part of our, the whole code enforcement program. Yeah. Comments, Carolyn, I know you recommended this.
Um, thank you for, you know, exploring this, this proposed policy and providing us some background. And I suppose from my own experience, I would be advised by your explanation here to deal with this, such things that I may see associated with our, you know, solid waste recycling and compost services as a code enforcement issue and, and report it as such. And maybe then it would be handled more appropriately. So I'll take that note for the future. In regard to assisting residents with concerns about these services, perhaps my phrase there was not very clear. And I'm not necessarily advocating that this needs to be a policy at this point, but what I was referring to was the city has contract with these services. Okay. So then residents may find that they're having a problem. Well, you know, I'm almost answering my own question. So I'm saying, I, I guess I'm thinking that the residents are having a problem with the service that, but that indeed needs to be handled by the resident and the service. So I, I guess the city doesn't need to be in the middle of that. So I guess, I guess I actually did have in mind the code enforcement issues. And if that can be handled just with the existing code, I, I guess I would withdraw the proposed policy unless somebody else is in love with it.
Okay. Given that commentary, does anybody feel strongly one way or another? Seeing none, given that this was Carolyn's comment and she's satisfied with the staff's response with that. Do we have consent? I'll just ask, do we have consensus from the group to not include this in the changes? Great. Okay. All right. The next proposed change is to policy eight point eight. This is in regards to wireless communication facilities. This was a new policy, policy eight point eight is a new policy that was proposed in the first draft of the utilities element. In response to the, the work that we have completed regarding wireless communication facilities. And this was just to get the, the cop, cop plan to reflect that work that we had already done around regulations. And the proposal here is to add noise and visual impacts to the policy in addition to aesthetic and off-site app impacts. This one, there isn't necessarily a hard recommendation one way or the other. This is more of a, a style. A, a style. Carolyn, I'll, I'll let you talk to this real quick. If you have any additional comments beyond what's been provided.
Sure. This one I proposed because during our deliberations about WCF, we had a lot of concerns regarding noise and visual impacts of these installations. And I believe our code has some specifics regarding that. So I felt that by only stating in the comp plan that we were concerned about mitigating aesthetic issues or offsite ish impacts, that we were really missing the meat of what we really did our work on in updating the code on this. The word aesthetic, you know, is, is something that pertains to beauty. And it really doesn't reach the appropriate levels of concern for, you know, living amongst these installations. So I, I thought we should be a little more specific. That was the reason I proposed it.
Okay. Any other thoughts or comments on this, whether it should be included or not?
So just to clarify, we have to add this, the eight point eight, right? That's
correct. I mean, well, have to tough to pin down, but it, it is, it is, it's something that we've already done and it just gives some of that. Make sure that the plan reflects that thing that we've already done.
Okay, then, yeah, in, in the no, confirming that, yeah, I would, I would agree with Commissioner Boatsman, like, I could read aesthetic as the aesthetics of the tower and not the visual impacts or noise around it. So I, I like it.
Commissioner Murphy or Commissioner Curry, any comments here? I think Carolyn's point was just to add the noise and visual impact statement to this. But comments on that or more broadly, Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah, I think her suggested changes are good. I like it.
Okay. Kate, you're gonna thumbs up over here. All right, well, I'm seeing enough consensus around the table. I'll just quickly call for an agreeance in adding just the statements around noise and visual impacts to that proposed item. Do I have a thumbs up that we're in agreeance with the proposal? Okay, I see consensus, Adam, so.
Great. So that's the last one in the memo. And then in, I didn't include this in the memo, but I just wanted to really quick go over one more here. So let me share that. Just for completion sake. So Commissioner Rag had, had proposed a, an alternate wording to policy three point three in the utilities element. And this is on page five of the element.
I'm sorry, is this the land use or the utilities?
It's the utilities element. Sorry. And, and essentially this is one where there it, he's proposed some alternate language that's just a cleaner read of the sentence. I think if it were not a policy language, I would have just made it and called it out in the comment matrix, but I wanted to make sure that you were aware that that policy language was for the next draft would change slightly to reflect the, the proposal.
Okay, so sorry.
I'm lost. I can't find where this is here.
Page five of sixteen.
Oh, okay.
Under sewer utility policies.
Element.
Well, I folded my papers the wrong direction, so I'm
I'm getting there.
Reverse order.
Okay, so, all right, all right. Okay, now I found it. Thank you.
Yeah. And it really, it doesn't change the intent or the implementation of the policy or any anything. It just makes it a cleaner sentence. So again, I just wanted to give you a heads up that, that, that change will be reflected in the next draft unless there's a an objection at this point.
And I'm gonna ask, can you, I was gonna ask him to repeat, is that what you were gonna ask?
I haven't, I don't know what we're talking about.
Yeah, can you, so can you just repeat the, the comment then? We were looking for it. Well, yes, I'm sorry. So it's policy three point three. Yep. And the, the staff drafted had made some changes for some, for clarity. And then Commissioner Rag has proposed a couple of different, of additional changes to make it clearer. So the, the policy would be the one that's underlined here. And it would be require any septic system serving a site being redeveloped, be de-commissioned according to county and state regulations that the site must be connected to the sewer system. It, it basically says the same thing as the initially proposed policy, but it's a little cleaner than what was initially proposed. Got it. So the intent, the same, it's just a rewording of the thing. Okay, Carolyn?
And, and you'll delete the word must?
Yes.
Okay, just a grammar problem there.
Yeah, that was one of the, the changes. It'll be in a better strikeout underlying format, but I didn't want to let this one get lost here. Okay. Adam, did you, this was your comment? Did you have?
Yeah, it was, it was just, I think there were, was an extra must in there and ex common, it was just for readability. There was no content change as we can see.
Great.
So that was a a heads up on that, that, that'll change in the next draft. I'll create that reflected there. Other than that, that concludes our walkthrough here of the, of the comments on the capital facilities and utilities elements, unless there are other comments today. And I can see a hand up, so.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll do one round if there's anything that else that folks wanted to raise that wasn't already raised, Adam.
Um, I think I asked a clarification on page three of thirty-six of the capital facilities plan. This was, it was an update to the number of acres per thousand persons of population. And, you know, I understand the old numbers being updated to the new number. And then it would, the proposes, the proposed change by staff was to remove the old data where it compares Mercer Island to other peer cities. And I thought that was useful information, even if it's outdated, you know, what I would, I would, I'll, I'll push on this and say, let's include the current data and say we have eighteen and a half acres. And at whatever point in time in the past, we had twenty point eight, and here's how that stacks up against Bellevue, Kent, Redmond and Kirkland. I think it's important to show that the trend for us and where we sit relative to other cities on that. So I'll, I'll be annoying on this one and bring it to the attention of the commission.
Okay. Sorry, did you have a response?
Just, just a, a clarification on why that was struck. It's not that that we don't want to include that. It's that, that, that data is really hard to get on the rates, the updated rates on it. So.
And, and I wasn't asking for update. I was just saying like, okay, we've got our new one. And then in the past, we've already got this. So it's like our trend and our past relative of that metric.
For those other cities, do we know how old the data is that's in there? Is it five years, ten years, twenty years? Like if that's nineteen ninety data, I'd say it's striking, like it, it's irrelevant.
I don't know when the last draft, when, when this was put into the, the element, but it's no newer than six years. Yeah.
I'm sure it's changed a lot in six years. Carol?
Oh, I guess I just kind of like to save the staff, the extra effort to research those numbers. It's interesting, but probably doesn't need to be in our comprehensive plan.
How often do we calculate this for our purposes in our jurisdiction? I'm guessing it's probably not easy for us to pull that data either.
Right. I believe that this was the updated number was pulled from our pros plan, which was just updated. That'll probably be another several years until that plan's updated again. But in all likelihood, it would be the next periodic review would be when we'd calculate this again. Which would be twenty thirty-four probably. Okay, Commissioner Murphy?
Yeah, this is a metric that is historically been used in developing impact fees, park impact fees. And so I, to say that it's, you know, nice, but not important, I think doesn't sort of misses that point. And I do believe that most jurisdictions maintain this information in some fashion. You know, I can't imagine it's that hard to tease out because, as I said, it's a metric that's used at times to evaluate the park fees. So I'd be in favor of keeping it in, but I don't know if this is the current information. It'd be more useful if they were current or reasonably current.
Yeah, there's one to ask Mike question.
Yeah, go ahead, Carol.
So Mike, when you were saying it was important, you, you were referring to the, the data for the other cities? The Bellevue and the Kent and the Kirkland and all of that.
Well, the debt, yeah, the debt.
But we should have that in our comp plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's valuable to, to, as a comparator, to see what other cities are doing. And also to see where we come out with park fees and why. And it's, it's an important data point to give people information about that.
I can certainly go either way. It's just not a strong.
Um, well, since I don't see anyone else jumping to make a comment, I guess the only comment I would make is without actually understanding when the snapshot in time of that data is, to me, it's, it's useless. I, I mean, it's interesting, but it actually doesn't provide any good comparative, because those snapshots could be from fifteen years ago, they could be from six years ago. I take your word for it, that it was probably done during the last update, but without actually having that encapsulated in there, I don't know how often Kirkland refreshes their data. fifteen years ago, they could be from six years ago. I take your word for it that it was probably done during the last update, but without actually having that encapsulated in there, I don't know how often Kirkland refreshes their data, whatever document we pulled that from. So I I'm in favor of striking it unless we're going to go through the exercise of actually ensuring that we have the most up to date data. And then if we do that, we need to include the point in time that that statistic was representative of. We could, for the, for the final, for the public hearing draft, the next time you guys touch it, we could, we could update these. I'm sure we could update these numbers or provide more information about when they, when they're from, because if it, yeah, if it's twenty sixteen or something, maybe that's worth it. But if it's nineteen ninety, it's not.
Yeah, right. Victor?
If I'm understanding the point that Mike is making, I think he's asking us to actually update it and have it current.
Yeah, and I'm just adding the caveat that I want to know what, even if we go and get the data from Kirkland, that data could still be ten years old.
Understood.
Yeah. Mike?
Yeah, you can go online and just look at Kirkland's park plan.
Yeah, no, I I totally get it. Like the exercise of going and grabbing the data, the harder part will be actually finding out when is that, what is that data representative of if they're not specific about this figure, they they'll claim that, but is that what year was that actually calculated from? So that's the, that would be my only thing. So if we're able to add them in a reasonable way, I mean, I would be in favor of keeping it in because I do think it is an important comparator, but without, to me, without that extra information, then it just becomes noise. Well, what I'll do is I'll note that down and that'll be part of when we come back to this element, that'll be part of what we touch on. At at that point, it'll be relatively easy to just go through and say this is when the years are, you know, when these are from in the meeting. So it shouldn't. I I don't think that's too big of an ask. Okay.
Cool. All right, I think that's a good movement forward. Any other, Kate, yes?
I had one potential additional item. I don't know that it's ripe, but I think, you know, again, on the lines of the clean water, healthy habitat thing, integrating natural asset management into utilities management, I think is a good policy. And we have bits and pieces of that, but we don't have like an asset management system. And I think I raised this last time, so I won't bemoan it. But I think I think a simple policy that we want to integrate natural asset management into utilities management, and that would go under like it would be a new policy like one point five or one point six.
One sec, I'll get you. I just want to find where she's here.
That'd be on the first page of the utilities element.
The very beginning of the packet after meeting start page two of six. Sorry, it's not written down anywhere.
Yeah, I understand. I just want to see it in context. And I have, I have since the start of the meeting moved all of my nothing's in order.
This is it's this here.
Okay, Kate, if you'd like, if you'd like to read it one more time, I'll type it up so everybody can see it. Yeah.
Integrate natural asset management into utilities management. And what that, what that would do is, you know, I don't know, I don't know. And part of the reason I don't know if this is right is because I don't actually know the status of the city's current asset management system. I asked in our last meeting and it sounded like like many jurisdictions, it's a hodgepodge of different disconnected systems. So there might be a there might be a broader policy of needing a an asset management system just generally for the city.
And by assets, we're defining those as trees and features?
Green, green infrastructure. So if you have a bit of forested parkland and ravine that's providing stormwater services, you if you're in an asset management system, you have performance standards. So we're gonna have X amount of conifers, X amount of deciduous trees. And if you reach a certain threshold, the asset management system tells you thou shalt go and plant more trees, or thou shalt go and remove ivy or or whatnot, you know, and I think our green infrastructure is so incredibly important. We are a hilly community. And all the landsites we have and things like that. I think we need to pay more attention to our natural assets and make sure that we're putting the appropriate funding into maintaining them. And so a natural asset management system leans towards that.
Question for you, Adam, is in the language that's proposed there, I think it potentially falls awry of the same issue with the other that this is a kind of a directive program potentially versus consider, consider the integration of asset management into the Yeah, I think this one's on the line, maybe because this isn't necessarily directing us to create an asset management system. It is saying that it in our utilities management, we're going to consider our natural assets and and as part of that, I think, as drafted. So it could be softened up a bit if if the commission wanted to do that. I think that would be.
So I think the way you just described it actually sounded the right way, which is consider consider natural assets as a part of what did you say, as a part of utilities management programmers or something like that, or whatever utilities management system or whatever, or utilities management?
Yeah, I I think maybe those are the two alternatives.
I believe Commissioner Arquise has a comment.
Sorry, I'm I'm still reading.
I I just, as people are reading and processing, I wanted to make a note that the difference between these two is that that the one on top is vague and it's a nod to natural assets, whereas the one on the bottom talks about asset management. Asset management is very specific discipline. And it requires that you have thresholds for action.
Well, and we can change the top part to natural asset management. I was probably paraphrasing. To me, it was more around the directive nature of integrate versus the consideration of these things as a part of this other program. Just to stay consistent with the previous conversations around how that fine line of I added an A and a B if that helps when we're talking about. Thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to withdraw B.
Why would you be, why? Why would you be happy to withdraw B?
Because I don't know, based on the response of city staff at the last meeting, when I asked about our existing asset management system. I I don't know that everyone's speaking the same language when they say asset management. And so I think maybe we're at the stage where we need to consider as opposed to integrate, because there might not be anything to integrate into in terms of a holistic system.
May I comment, please?
Yeah.
But in B, you're saying integrate natural asset management into utilities management. I mean, utilities management is a thing that exists, and you're saying to integrate something into it. So I'm not sure what you're saying might not exist.
Would you like me to respond?
Yeah.
So it's just, I think it comes down to, and Adam and I had some back and forth about the concept of asset management and what that actually means. As opposed to like utility, utilities management, you're managing utilities. Asset management can be applied to a variety of city services. And it it basically has you're defining your asset, you're saying what values you want to get out of that asset. And then you are setting thresholds for when the city will act to maintain, preserve, or replace that asset. And so what I don't know is I don't know whether our utilities management is done with an asset management system. So if we don't have an asset management system for utilities management generally, there's nothing for natural asset management to be integrated into.
Say that last one again, please, if you would.
If we don't already use an asset management system for our see inorganic utility.
Oh.
Management program. Then there's nothing for natural asset management to integrate into.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Online, Commissioner Curry, Commissioner Murphy, any comments from you?
I think A is better. Because I I don't think we have, as Kate pointed out, we don't have we don't know what the utilities do, and we don't have a natural asset management system to integrate into that. So I think that we're at the consider stage.
Yes, Adam?
I think more of a procedural question. I know we've always been voting yea or nay. Can I like sit out of vote? Because I I'm just, I don't feel I'm informed enough to vote yes or no.
Always abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any Victor, any comments? No is an acceptable answer. Adam, do you have any additional commentary to this from a staff perspective? I know this is kind of on the fly. You know, what I would expect is if we have consensus to include this, that you would maybe be able to come back with any additional info at the next meeting, since this isn't a final decision, but.
Yes, and I I think this is a good one to get some public comment on too.
Yeah. Okay. I I'm in favor of including it just for that purpose. If for anything else, it just continues to foster the dialogue around what this is, why it would be useful and what the public, if any interest they have in understanding more about it, and we can choose to from their include or disclude. Include it in the future. So all in favor of including one point six A, just for this public hearing draft. Please put your thumb up. I have four, so that's enough. Five, great.
All right. Yeah. That that concludes what I had prepared.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you, Adam. Any other? Any other items for Adam around these two elements before we will take a quick recess and then come back for the next section? All right, hearing none. It is seven twenty six. Let's come back in fourteen minutes at seven forty. So with the letter, just a process comment, you can, you can forward that letter to the council. The planning commission could decide to do that. You can work on drafting it further. This topic, you could also consider bringing back at the next docket. When we, when we go through the docket later this year, that's in September, if you'll remember. So there's, there's a couple of different avenues by which you can go with, with this topic, if you want to pursue it further. On the letter part of it, if you were to provide that to council, they will be working on work plans for departments at their retreat later this year. So it would be timely to send them a letter at this time, if that's what you want to do. That, that's the extent of my comments.
Okay. So we could choose to, if we have consensus around something, we could choose to, to direct staff to pen a final something to move forward without the need to bring it back if we so desired.
Right. And, and I think with this, because it's a planning commission correspondence, staff doesn't necessarily need to be involved in the drafting. If you have, you know, if you want to generate this letter on your own.
Okay.
As a body, you're able to do that. Yeah.
Great.
Okay, with that, then I'll start with Carolyn, since I know you penned this in a number of the comments, and then we can walk through all of these and see where the group is in its desire to move forward and what sort of action we want to take.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Okay, so where I will start is by reminding that we had a draft letter that we looked at, at our, in our November meeting. And the consensus was that some, the problems had been identified fairly well, but that folks wanted to see recommendations about what to do with those problems. So that's the purpose of this revised letter. And again, these are, these are possible ways to approach the problems. You know, we're not trying to say to the council, well, here's the problem, and this is the solution for the problem. It's more, here's the type of solution that might get to the problem. That was my goal in writing the letter. So basically, just for review, you know, the problem that I was bringing to attention was that the PC is using some criteria that might be more appropriately used by the council. That docketing criteria, in some ways, might unnecessarily discourage docketing. Thereby, you know, rejecting some proposals that might have some merit. The code is confusing, and I've added actually one problem to the previous letter that I didn't articulate. We may have talked around it, but we didn't have it in writing, and that would be the fourth item. We tend to, and the council probably as well, we tend to decide whether to docket something based on whether we like the idea or not, rather than whether it raises an appropriate issue for the docket in terms of, you know, being something important to consider. Because, you know, if something were to be docketed, and then that matter comes back to the planning commission or to the council, then you get all of the information. You get enough information to decide if it's a good idea. But we tend to make the decision as to whether we like the idea. So without, without all that information. So I would add that to the fourth item, which is a problem. And for each one, the letter that I've drafted recommends possible approach to improving the process. Little bit of history, Adam, correct me if I'm mistaken here, but I was told by Department of Commerce staff who oversee the Growth Management Act at the state level that the docket process became part of state law in the Growth Management Act in about 1995. But to my understanding, Mercer Island didn't have a docket process until rather recently. Citizen Mercer Island citizens petitioned the Growth Management Hearings Board in 2018 to add a docket process to see Mercer Island's procedures, and it was added quickly. In 2018, C. Mercer Island agreed to comply. And this code that we've all been talking about, this 19.15.230 was added in 2018. That might be why there seems to be so much conflict in the code, because it was sort of added on top of other things that are already there. So that could be one of the reasons why there's a fair amount of code confusion. So this code, to my understanding, is this about correct? Am I getting about right, Adam, in terms of the dates and so on?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the, the docketing procedure that we currently use was adopted in 2018.
Okay.
Around about there.
So you know, this code has, has been in use for about four years. When I first started as a planning commissioner, we weren't doing docketing, that I can recall the first year, and then the procedure started. And you know, it, it could benefit from some review, having only been new and in use for a few years. In the broader sense, I think it remains to be seen how useful the docketing process itself will be to citizens, even if we make some improvements. I think you might maybe have noticed that by the time the docket process comes around, the city manager, the directors, the city council already have a pretty good idea of what the next year's focus is going to be. But all of a sudden, folks come in with a whole bunch of new things in October. And I think it's, I can understand the feeling, you know, on part of staff and departments and so on. Hope, how are we going to fit that in? You know, we don't have resources. So I think the overall problem of, you know, citizens wanting to change their government, I'm not so sure the docket process is going to work really well. But I think we still should improve what we have, and that's what my letter is. You know, towards is to improve the process. So, okay, so that, that's kind of the background I can give you as to this draft that you have in your packet right now.
Great. So with that, I, there's two elements to the letter. There's the introductory section. I put it's all out of order now, as I moved it around. There's sort of the front page one introductory part, and then there's sort of an outlining of four concerns. Yeah, four, yeah, four concerns. So happy to take A, general comments, and then B, any specific comments or changes or wherever. So I'll go from here. Kate, I see you've got your hand first.
Yeah, I want to thank Commissioner Boatsman for pulling this together. It's a lot of work represented here. I agree with most of the concerns. I think that I don't necessarily agree with the proposed outcome for resolving the concern. I think that number four and number one could be integrated together. I feel though, that the directive, the recommendation to consider establishing difficult or different criteria for commission and the council. I don't feel that's appropriate based on my research, which is another item that is in our packet. It's the last page of the packet. That's the research that Adam, and I think another member of the commission, plus that I share the research I've done. Because it seems to me that most cities use the same, most planning commissions and cities use the same criteria. And I have a sense that we might need to have some legal analysis. There's probably a reason they do that. So I think for me to get behind a letter like this, we'd have to state a concern, and really for any of the concerns, maybe some alternatives for the council to consider, and then we'd want to have, like, the city attorney review those alternatives to ensure they comply with state code, because this is driven by state code. So so in terms of, so my, my thought on concern number one, so just generally, my thought is that we need to have alternative recommendations for their consideration, and that we should combine one and four, and and then for number two, I think three is good. You know, we need to clear up some confusion about the code. I agree with that one too. But I, I tend to disagree with number two. And the reason I disagree with number two is because I don't see the docketing process as, since Mercer Island doesn't have an equity code, and
I feel though that the directive, the recommendation to consider establishing difficult or different criteria for commission and the council. I don't feel that's appropriate based on my research, which is another item that is in our packet. It's the last page of the packet. That's the research that Adam, and I think another member of the commission plus that I share the research I've done. Cause it seems to me that most cities use the same, most planning commissions and cities use the same criteria. And I have a sense that we might need to have some legal analysis. There's probably a reason they do that. So I think for me to get behind a letter like this, we'd have to state a concern and really for any of the concerns, maybe some alternatives for the council to consider. And then we'd want to have like the city attorney review those alternatives to ensure they comply with state code because this is driven by state code. So so in terms of, so my, my thought on concern number one. So just generally my thought is that we need to have alternative recommendations for their consideration and that we should combine one and four. And and then for number two, I think three is good. You know, we need to clear up some confusion about the code. I agree with that one too. But I, I tend to disagree with number two. And the reason I disagree with number two is because I don't see the docketing process as since Mercer Island doesn't have an equity code. And that's something that needs to be docketed in and of itself, apparently if the council doesn't choose to try to initiate something like that. I think we see very few people coming to the table to the docketing process. The issues that were brought forth this year were highly specific, so specific that they seem to reflect, you know, maybe neighborhood action, right? A very specific activity and I think that if we're going to ask citizens to provide input into what priority should be through the docket process, we should figure out how we're going to communicate with the public about that in a way that yields more than one person outside of the city bringing forth docket recommendations. Because that's not hearing from the citizens. That's hearing from one person. And I, I disagree that proposals that have been considered in the past three years. You know, both, both whether or not the work program and the staff's comments of budget consideration and whether things have been considered. I, I kind of disagree with that comes there. But again, I think that could be resolved by having alternatives and I'd be happy to help draft alternatives. I think that's everything I meant. That was long-winded. I apologize, but I thought about this and so I would, I would propose maybe tabling and having us as a group and maybe people besides just me and Carolyn invest some time into really thinking about this process and coming up with alternatives for each of these concerns. That would be my proposal.
Okay.
May I reply to Kate's comments? I think, I think it would be best to.
Yeah. Uh, uh, yeah, I just want to make sure I get to everyone else a chance to speak. So.
Okay. Well, I'm going to get, okay, it might get confusing. I'm going to get some scratch paper. I'm going to make a bunch of lists here. All the comments. Okay. Very good. That's Kate. All right. Ready?
Sorry. Did you want to go or you want to wait until?
Oh, oh.
Goes around.
I thought you wanted me to wait.
I just want to make sure. I just don't know how long you were going to be. I don't.
No, I, I just thought that since there's about 10 things to address that it might be difficult if then we weave in all the things from the other folks. I thought it would be best to address those things at the, at the outset.
Yes.
My suggestion.
My, my only request is I don't want a rebuttal on 10 points for every person after, you know what I mean? Like I don't, I don't want to, I want to give everyone a chance to speak and then you can come back and.
And whatever you prefer, Chair.
All right, let's, we'll, we'll go that route and then we'll, we'll, I'll make sure you have time. Um, Adam, did you have any additional comments or?
I hadn't raised my hand, but I'll, I will have.
I'm going to go to everybody just because I want to make sure everyone has a.
Can I pass?
Way in.
You can pass and come back.
And I'll come back.
Please, sure.
Uh, I'll go Commissioner Murphy. Do you have any thoughts or? Oh, you're still on mute.
Sorry about that. I do have a few. I was originally, well, I agree with many of the things in Carolyn's letter. And back in December, I would have said sending this is a good idea to try and get some clarification. Or some version of this, not necessarily this letter, but some version to seek clarification from the council. I, I'd like Kate's idea of integrating, getting some legal advice with respect to this. But frankly, having gone back and watched again recently, the the council meeting at which our our recommendations were addressed and having now done this couple of years and watched it. I frankly don't think that we'll get anything of value back from the council. And like much of the work that we presented back in December, we'll get, you know, nothing back. They are not going to take the time to go through these kinds of details and provide this kind, provide the kind of direction that we're asking for. I think it is, it is a a good idea, but it is not one that will be well received, nor is it one that will be acted upon. So the question is, how much effort do we want to throw into it? I hate to be pessimistic, but that's my assessment.
Very good. Victor, I'll go to you next.
So I too agree with a lot of Carolyn's comments. My original comment was going to be, but I don't know where we go with it. Yeah. But I think Mike just articulated for me what I probably was struggling with. And so I agree with the comments, but I really strongly agree with what Mike just said.
Okay. Commissioner Curry, do you have any?
Agree with Vice Chair Murphy and Commissioner Rasis.
Okay. Um, Adam, I'm going to come back to you.
Yeah, I've, I've had a chance to collect my thoughts. Um, so yeah, I, I guess I had some I'd formulated some opinions on concerns one and two, A and B. You know, it, it seems like the concern in one is that we may be incorrectly discarding proposals for the docket. But you know, we, we approved all but one and that was a close vote. So I, I I guess I failed to see the problem of concern one. Now concern two, A and B, I think, you know, I, I would be, i- if a letter was sent to the city council for being read or being ignored, I, I would, I would feel comfortable. You know, saying, yeah, I, I kind of follow what's in two A and two B. Um, I think there was that bike path topic that Commissioner Boatsman had been raising and it seemed like it was just getting pinballed back and forth. Or, oh, it's part of a work program and it doesn't get touched for a few years. So I think those are ones where from my very short time on the commission, I've, I've seen, I've, I've seen an example or heard of an example of two A. So I see, okay, there's an issue there. I could see to be also like, you know, maybe someone just wants to be persistent, maybe. You know, there's always change every year. So I think these are two ways to kind of discard docket proposals. I think let, let's open it up. So I, I agree with two A and two B. I would. Yeah, but I disagree with one. And I think that's it. I think the other thought I had when I was reading this before the meeting was, you know, Seattle, Redmond, Bellevue, Sammamish, these are all much larger cities. So presumably they may have a larger pile of docket items. So they, they need a way to perhaps quick, no, 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 or that's already being dealt with. We had, you know, we had a manageable number of items for us to consider and do our own little research. And so I don't, I don't think we need to be over specifying how to handle things. And I've seen with two A and two B examples of how things have been discarded. So that, that's kind of my, my take on it. So in short, I'm like, yeah, I would, I like two A and two B, but I'm not in favor of trying to over specify a solution or, you know, we, we have some insight, right? Let us have the freedom to have an opinion. We had very, very different votes on all of those. I think that was, I thought that was pretty cool. It wasn't the same vote, the same people on all of them. So I think that having that freedom is good.
Okay, I'll just quickly give my two cents and then go back to Carolyn so she can respond. I made my commentary while we were going through this process. Well known and that I think, I'll take part of the responsibility on this, but myself, staff, I think there's a there was a lack of preparation that was provided to the body in helping folks understand what the process is for, how it's to be used, what the sort of the intent of having a process to address all of these sorts of things. Actually, we'll go to a disagreement to what Kate said, which is my experience of this, having been in other cities that have had the exact same docketing process with the same exact docketing criteria going back 20 years. The intent is for the example of the beach club and the dock where they're trying to accomplish a project that for all for all good intent, everyone is in support of, but there is a there is a, a, a point of conflict in the code that is preventing that from happening in i- i- in, in, in a way that is in other ways being promoted or supported. And the idea of the docketing process in my experience is that people can bring forward projects like that or, or conflicts that they need the body to review to resolve that conflict. And it's sometimes a conflict between code and between the comp plan. It could be another, other sorts of things. So they are actually very specific and very typically very directed at a individual action that is trying to be done, that needs to be reconciled, that the staff isn't empowered to make a decision on because the documents are in conflict with each other and the body needs to resolve that conflict. It is not an initiative process in my understanding of what docketing is. And the purpose of the language of you can't bring something back for three years is if we hear using the example of the beach club, if we hear this year, they come in and they ask us to reconcile the conflict and a decision is made, it's a waste of time for them to bring it back next year. We made a decision. And unless there are extenuating circumstances that might change the reason or the need to reevaluate it, there is no need to bring it back forward because a decision has been made. That's again, the understanding and the history I have of the process. So I take, so using that context, I'm not like super excited about any of this because I think this is actually just a, we haven't done a good job of educating and training ourselves as a body on what the purpose of this is, how it should be administered and the, how we're supporting the council through that sort of decision-making process. I don't think we have educated the public in what this process is for and how they should be using it. So I think we're getting proposals that are coming in that may or may not be adequate or that may or may not be appropriate is the word I'm looking for, for the process. I would rather start there, which is like very clearly, we all have some different interpretations of what should or shouldn't be doing. We just need to actually either get the council or get someone from PSRC or some agency or whatever. I'm happy to do training. I'm happy to like do whatever we need to educate myself and all of us. So we can all be on the same page around what all of this should be. All of that being said, I think the answer that Commissioner Murphy gave is, and his assessment of where the council is on this is a reflection of that point, which is I think they're going to laugh us out of the room in saying the JV team is fumbling the ball down the field because they don't know how to do their job. And I'll take blame for that as the chair for not adequately preparing everyone to go through that. Again, that's my assessment and I'm not like trying to cast aspersions on anybody here. Like it's not necessarily about us, but I think it's about the perception of how that casts to them in light of sort of my history and knowing my history of, of applying these tools in other jurisdictions. So that's my long-winded, short answer, which is like, I'm just not in favor of any of this, but I will follow and sign whatever document as the chair, the, the board ultimately decides because that's my responsibility and I will support that. So with that, Carolyn.
Okay. Well, thank you for your comments, everyone. I would like to just digress for just a moment into other cities, the county, how they handle things. So I, I looked at about eight cities around here and King County as well. And it's, there's, there's lots of similarities, some differences. Most of them do use the same criteria and you know, you know, suffer from some of the same issues related to that. Some of them, i- i- it, it looks as if a number of them have just copied each other, you know, they have sort of the same criteria and they had, had to have this program. So these criteria do not come from the state, by the way, they do not have any statement as to what the criteria should be. They only say that once you get a docket request, then the city can decide whether it receives further scrutiny. Okay? But some of the, the criteria being used to my view, of course, have the same shortcomings in that they disregard requests in the same way that ours does. Interesting, King County doesn't even have a planning commission. And the staff in their executive office reviews docket requests and just prepares a recommended docket to the King County Executive. They don't have any criteria at all. Like Seattle, the staff and the commission do their own review. So the, the commission will do their review separately from the staff. There's no, you know, one suggesting to the other what they should do. And I thought it was very interesting. Sammamish was the city that had the most the most open criteria, the ones that I think are better. And they don't have those sort of convenient little tools for just disregarding or rejecting something based on a sort of arbitrary situation. So I would recommend, you know, looking at Sammamish, Sammamish's criteria. You know, I hear, in particular, I hear that the idea that the council will not be interested in this. And you know, we won't get much response from them. And that's possibly true. It doesn't bother me to send something to them that they don't pay attention to. If, you know, if we think it's a good idea, but if you don't think it's a good idea, well, then we don't need to send it. I want to respond to a couple of Kate's comments. Again, just because a lot of cities use the same criteria, I don't, you know, that their council and their commission use the same criteria. I don't think that makes it right. The planning commission, you know, we don't have, we're not privy to how this, the city is going to spend its money or use its staff to do things. And the council is, that's their decision. If we sit in a, you know, a meeting to decide what to recommend for the docket, you know, the staff pretty much usually tells us there isn't any resources to do this. And that happens every October. You know, I understand they're, they're quite busy. Usually the planning commission goes along with what they say, and then that's that. I remember one year when we pushed back a bit, we, we were proposing a climate action plan and the staff said, well, we won't be able to do that. And you know, we brought it back to another meeting and talked with, at the next meeting and then decided we would recommend it anyway. So then the council got that recommendation and they changed their work plan. They decided to find, you know, money in, in the budget to do that the subsequent year. And as we see right now, they're doing a climate action plan. So, you know, I don't think it's appropriate for us, for, for the commission to ask the planning staff, if they have time to do proposed docket requests that the public brings, I think that should go to the council. Okay. Another one of, of Kate's comments, needing legal analysis. So you were saying needing legal analysis regarding the criteria. You know, yeah, never hurts to have legal analysis, but again, the state law, and I've spoken with Department of Commerce. You know, yeah, never hurts to have legal analysis, but again, the state law, and I've spoken with Department of Commerce staff, they do not specify any criteria for us. And as you can see, King County doesn't even have any criteria. So I don't think it's a problem for Mercer Island to decide that the council will make decisions about budget and resources and the planning commission will use its expertise regarding the comp plan and the development regulations to make its recommendations. That's my suggestion. That's all it is. It isn't, isn't suggesting to not have criteria, to, to not reject things for a good reason, but it's just saying, I think the criteria don't seem to make some sense for this particular body that we're using. And if you look in our code, it doesn't say that those criteria are for the planning commission. It says they're for the council. So again, this code is pretty confused, pretty maybe insufficiently written and thought out, and it can be improved to, to take care of some of these particular issues. Again, now Kate, you're suggesting we should have alternative recommendations. I really think we should not go to that kind of effort. I think it was sufficient to just raise issues with the council, which was what the first draft did, saying here, here's some issues you might want to look into. And you know, the commission requested specific recommendations. So, you know, we have some here that are, are possible ways to go about it, but I really don't think the commission, you know, if the council decides to work on this, certainly we would be looking at alternatives in the analysis that would occur in the future, but I don't think we should send a list of alternatives. We're not trying to deliberate this issue, we're just trying to raise the issue. So I, I don't think we need to put ourselves to further effort to create a suite of alternatives. Let's see. And concern about not hearing from citizens. Well, the docket process is a process that opens up the city government in regards to the comp plan and the development regulations for recommendations from the citizens. It's unique in that they get an answer. It's not just sending an email to your city council person. It's not just coming and testifying at a meeting. You get to get an answer. So it's a unique thing that the Growth Management Act provided to give citizens a little bit more heft in being able to bring something to their city government. And the interesting thing is the Growth Management Act did not specify criteria, but the cities have all kind of adopted criteria that make it a little easier to just winnow things out. Okay, I understand concern for budgets and so on, but the Growth Management Act intended that citizens would be able to bring these things and get an answer. So it may be inconvenient, but cities can docket things and they can hold them over. If, if the state law allows you to hold them over for, so for example, if they docket something that is, is a residential development regulation amendment, they can hold that over until they get to that particular project. They don't have to reject something because they might do something later. Okay. And that's one of our criteria. Let's reject this because we think we're going to work on this, this year, but maybe we don't work on it this year. You know, or, or we're working on it now. So instead of folding it into what they're working on now, they reject it. The criteria say reject it because it's part of an ongoing work program. So they have every authority to fold these things into work programs that they have, yet the criteria says, let's reject it. Okay. So these are some things which I think should be corrected. Yeah. Okay. So I think it's worth sending a letter. Whether they like, whether they're interested in it or not, is not, is no harm sending a letter. If, if we think the process has some weaknesses that can be improved, they may or may not do anything about it. Okay. So I think I should stop, you know, I could, I could say more things, but I will stop.
Okay. We have a draft letter from Carolyn. We have a couple of options. We can take some additional feedback on the letter. We can have a, a few folks either come together or we can provide direction to Carolyn to make revisions, or we can specify revisions that we want to make. Or we could choose to do nothing. I will look to the group to see which direction folks want to go. Kate slaps her microphone first.
Just to clarify, if I both spoke earlier, I agree that the beach club is a perfect example, but it wasn't neighborhood specific. There are three other large community facilities that have a similar circumstance. And that's why that seemed appropriate to the docket process for me. I, I think that, I think the system is broken if you have only one resident bringing eight, eight docket items to consider. I think there's something very broken about our public process if that is what our rules lead us to. That is, uh, it doesn't mean that the things wrapped forth weren't legitimate. But I just think the whole process is problematic. I'm very concerned if we don't send some kind of letter that you're not going to be able to do what you'd like to do, Chair, which is clarify the rules because I agree with Carolyn that it's not clear. And I don't necessarily think that the planning commission has to have the exact same criteria as the council, but we do need some criteria and I think that's missing from the code. So I don't know if the solution is where a solution that we could all get our heads around, because I'm hearing a lot of just like, we don't want to do this, we'll get laughed at. I'm not backing it, but I think that in order for you to do the job you want to do, Chair, that we need at least, at a minimum, we need clarification on whether or not council wants us to use the same criteria. Or if they want staff to propose more of a screening level criteria for us, and then the more detailed criteria for themselves. And I think this is because, you know, some of us have faith in the staff budgeting process and some of us do not. My, my work group uses a staff allocation model and, uh, you know, they have a pretty, pretty, every single project, you have to project the number of hours for every person working. So I think our cost, my cost estimates are pretty darn good most of the time. And not to personalize it, but it seems that, you know, either the city manager or the council or somebody needs to make a statement about whether or not the city can afford to do it, not, I agree with Carolyn that it's not our role to like lick our thumb and stick it in the air and see which way the winds are blowing on that. I think we could simplify this letter down to, you know, one page that says there's some confusion. We'd like staff and the attorney to look at this and can you please decide whether or not we use the same criteria as you?
Okay. Commissioner Murphy. Vice Chair Murphy, sorry.
I think first of all, I comment on what Kate was saying. If we ask the staff to say what the staff wants, then we know what the answer is. There is a real philosophical issue that's being debated here, and that is what is our role? And and Dan, I think you're correct in describing what the system has effectively become. But it's not what the code says. And in fact, if you look at the application process or the submission process, if you're submitting for something specific, then you pay a fee. And if you're submitting something more generalized for consideration, you don't. So the whole process obviously contemplates you know, different, different things that can be pursued in different ways. And I do agree with Carolyn that it is intended to, to give the citizens a voice. But in fact, the practice has become that, that's very limited. And there, you know, some good reasons and some bad reason for that. The staff is not unlimited. Their resources are not unlimited. And you know, that has to be considered at some level. But at this point, I'm not, I don't see that the council would give us direction beyond, you know, do your job. I mean, my view is, is not, you know, they may view a letter like this as the JV fumbling the ball. Or, you know, what we submitted in, in December or to them in December that they considered then was our fumbling. I, I think a better argument can be made that their handling of it was more the JV fumbling the ball. But, uh, but that's my point. And that is that we are not going to get clear direction. If we get any direction, it's going to be to just follow the code. And I think we might be better off ourselves discussing, you know, philosophically, how we want to approach these things, given the constraints and guiding or creating our own path forward, because we will not get clear direction. I'm convinced.
Okay. Thank you. Any other responses to Adam?
Just some thoughts I wrote down while listening. I think you, Chair Hubble, right? You, you mentioned it's designed for inconsistencies, finding inconsistencies and raising those. And I thought that some of those that were related to the buildings, of building of houses were inconsistent with some, you know, staff memo or the intent of regulations that were written. So I think that's good. It is an inconsistency. Now, it's not inconsistencies within the code, but it's inconsistencies in the code and you know, the intent as documented in some document that existed. I, I agree also, like, you know, I agree with Vice Chair who just spoke. Yeah, I don't think we should look for direction here. I mean, I don't think the council can say, do this, right? We, we have to follow the rules and the rules are ambiguous, which as Commissioner Boatsman raised is not necessarily bad, right? Samamish was the most open one and I always hear like Samamish, high quality of life. That's, you know, that's, that's recognized kind of nationwide. So ambiguity in the rules here is, I don't think a problem. It's all we're making is recommendation. We're not saying this is how it has to be. It's, it's a suggestion. I think we are raising those inconsistencies and I think, you know, I, so I would not be comfortable saying, give us clarity, right? I mean, we can read the rules, we can read the code and we know the, the planning documents and we make our decision on that. But I would be comfortable saying, hey, two A and two B, these are existing problems that we have encountered. And we would like to bring it to council's attention. And I mean, yeah, I've been on JV teams, I've made mistakes and I've learned from them. So I'm, I'm fine. I don't care what, if people think I'm fumbling the ball. I'll ask, tell me I fumbled it and I'll learn from it.
I'm, I'm the coach. So how do you think I feel?
Can I get back?
Yes, you're good.
I'm concerned about the use of the city of Samamish as an example. And I think it would behoove us to look at the dysfunction that's happening in the governance there and the fact that they had to have King County select a council member because they couldn't come to agreement among themselves. They've turned over city managers rapidly, they've turned over council members rapidly. And I would just say, maybe, maybe a little caution on using Samamish as an example. They do have a wonderful quality of life though.
Carolyn.
Yeah, um, I would respond to a few things that were said. I don't think that the docket is just for changing, just for dealing with specific projects. I mean, it's very clear if, from the GMA language and our own code, that it's for other kinds of proposals. And as Mike, Michael Murphy pointed out, the process is set up for those projects that pay a fee and those that don't. So I guess I'm kind of wondering about that, the idea that you wouldn't think that a proposal to change the residential development standards would be an appropriate thing to bring. Kate, a comment about maybe just simplifying the letter and only commenting on the criteria. So you would not want to comment on the confusing code language? You don't think we should bring that up? It's just, you know, just is that?
I, I'm, I'm not saying that I don't feel we should bring it up. I do feel we should bring it up, but what I'm hearing from the group is that this letter is very unpopular right now.
No, I, this is a specific question. Do you, do you think we would want to alert them to the idea that, that the, that the code language is confusing? Because that's one of the items in the letter and you said only criteria. So I'm just curious about that and, and Adam as well.
Only criteria. I'm trying to find a path forward to Chair Hubble to do the job of telling us what to do.
Oh, okay. Well, all right.
I think, okay, if there, there, we, the letter outlines a number of problems and I agree with many of them. But if the consensus of the group is that we might get laughed out of the council meetings, we put that letter forward, that I think at a minimum, we would want to ask, do you want us to follow the criteria? Do you want us to split them and have some screening?
Okay. So I mean, I, I don't know that we have a consensus that will be laughed out of the city council. So I mean, I don't think we should come to that conclusion yet, but so the letter that I've drafted doesn't look for direction in telling them, you know, tell us what to do. It just, here's some problems, here's some possible solutions. These types of things, if the council decides that it needs attention, they assign it to the, the CPD staff and they, you know, put it in a work program and they come back to us with, here's an issue. How are we going to deal with this, folks? So we would get it back. We would then be the ones recommending new language regarding this code to the city council, because it's part of Title 19. Am I not, am I mistaken about that? Yeah, it's Title 19. So that's how, that's how it would progress. And concern regarding Samamish, an example, I can, I think, you know, we're just, just looking at their criteria is all. I mean, I, I, I don't think we should try to read too much into their existing problems that they're having there. Okay. Okay. So I guess, I wanted to also ask Adam, you, you didn't want to bring up the confusing code language? I guess maybe everybody, that's number three in my letter. Is that something, could we go maybe item by item and see what people are in favor of perhaps? Because I hear so many different pieces of it.
So, hold on.
Process question, not a, not a comment on the letter itself.
Yes, for clarity, and then I'm going to go to Commissioner Curry. No, yeah, go ahead and ask your question.
Oh, just my, just as a, as a process options, I'm, I'm very concerned about going line by line on this or item by item. I think we will continue having a debate and I, I'm concerned that that might not be productive. I feel like it's, it, it needs some outside of, what is this thing called?
Dias.
Outside of the Dias work.
You know, I have tried to reach people about things. I've tried to meet with you outside of the meeting. I couldn't get it, get together with you to talk about it. I've talked to a few others. We've tried that. I'll just, just throw that out there, but we can make it more formal and try to do it again, but I'm not sure it's worth it, but.
Okay, I'm going to go to Commissioner Curry because he had his hand first and I think Adam, you had your hand up again. And if I'm missing you, Victor, back in the back, just let me know. Commissioner Curry.
I appreciate Kate's last comment about going line by line. I don't know that it would be helpful right now. In the words of Mr. Bezos, agree to disagree, I think comes to mind right now, but we still need to try to move forward somehow. So what I would ask is if we were to look at this letter and we were to try to prioritize it by issue, and we had to pick one that we wanted to try to act upon, would that be something that we could agree to? And to say, hey, let's focus on this, let's revise as necessary. And once we figure it's in a right spot, then maybe we can move that forward.
So you're, you're reading my mind, Commissioner Curry. That was the direction I was going to go. Once I got everyone's voices out, I was going to try to move us in that direction. So.
Right. I'm learning from the coach. Right. I'm learning from the coach.
Adam, did you have any another another comment or?
I I think that's a good idea. Yeah. Some of these could be take a lot of work to resolve and some may not. So yeah, let's let's see what everyone's priority is and.
Yeah, I I I got you. So I I think the the best way to start here is is like work from the top down, which is just asking the question, do we do we have a majority of four or more who are in favor of sending a letter in some form to the council on this issue? And then we'll and then we'll ladder down into what exactly the content of that should be if there are i- if there's an agreement of four. So I'm going to start at the top is are there four people that believe that there's some issue that on this topic that they want to move forward to the council? Throw me a thumbs up. I've got one, two, three, four. Okay, so we have four. So there's at least a majority that agree that there's something to send forward. The next question to where Kate and Commissioner Curry were going, which is to what extent that like to what should that entail? So there are four broad issues that Carolyn brings up in her letter. And if you look at the first part of the letter, she summarizes them in paragraph two, basically.
Yeah, it should say four areas. It should say four areas. I said three areas. That was an error.
Yeah, and frankly, the numbers one and two here are the way they're worded could they're both related to criteria, whether they're appropriate. And whether whether A, they're appropriate and B, whether they need to be different between the two bodies is kind of the the way I would look at that. So of the four, without going into the detail on the second and third pages of the four, are there any one or all of these that we can have consensus on sort of addressing in the letter? And I'm happy to just go call them one, two, three, four and see if we've got four people. So.
Before you do that, may I clarify something?
Sure.
Okay, um, there is quite a difference between number one and two. Maybe it didn't look quite that way. The first one is the commission and the council using the same criteria and and that issue. The second one there has to do with criteria that are used to reject docket proposals. And I pointed out two examples that I thought probably weren't appropriate. Okay, all right.
Yes, that 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 does make sense. So um I I'm just going to approach it this way. So consensus of four people to send a letter. The first issue that was raised is the appropriateness of the commission and the council using the same criteria for evaluating the items that have been presented to the docket. So are there thumbs up if you believe this is an issue that should be reflected in the letter? Asking for direction or reconciliation on whether the council and the commission should be using the same criteria? So thumbs up. Okay, so I have two. And it was clear to everybody what I'm asking.
Chair.
Yes.
Can I just confirm that when you're talking about these ones, you're referring to the recommendation, not the concern, correct?
These are the concerns in paragraph two of Carolyn's letter on the front page, and they are numbered one, two, three, and four.
In the on the first page?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying. Do you need more than that?
No, but I did only see two thumbs up, so.
That is correct for for the first one. So number two is whether the criteria themselves are appropriate irrespective of who's looking at them. Are the criteria themselves appropriate or unnecessarily restrictive, however you want to interpret appropriate? But is this an issue that we need to put forward to the council for direction? Thumbs up if you believe. So I have one and I have two. Okay, so no consensus. Item number three is related to the code language being confusing essentially in the administration of this program. Is that a fair? So the third is, is there consensus that the letter should include some direction or be related to addressing the issue of the confusing code language? Are there four people in favor of that as a topic for the letter? I have one, two. No, all right. And then number four. And I changed one word in this Carolyn, so just because I think it clarifies here is number four is whether the criteria are appropriately applied versus used. Just we're applying them correctly during deliberations. I I mean, it's basically means the same. You can see that.
Yeah.
Appropriate applied during deliberations.
We could figure that out later, but what I meant was are the criteria being used to make the decision? Or are people not using them at all and just deciding whether they like the idea that was proposed by the proponent?
Got it.
Okay, so maybe I didn't work that very well. These are all very complicated things to express. That's very difficult.
Yeah. So the fourth item is of the fourth area of concern is whether or not, as Carolyn said, whether these criteria are appropriately being used by either body during the deliberations in coming up with their proposed recommendations. So is there a consensus that this is something that we should raise the awareness of in a letter? Do we have one? We have one.
So it looks like we don't understand this letter.
So we have consensus that we should send a letter, but no consensus on what that letter should include. So I I'm happy to take any other proposals on what should be included in a letter, or we can leave it with, there's no consensus on the issue. And people who are so inclined can address this in a personal transmittal if they would like to the council. I'm hearing no proposals for any other topic to consider. Okay, so with that, I'm going to conclude that the we have sort of come to a consensus that there's no we do not have a majority in favor of moving forward with a letter. Is that correct?
Sounds correct to me.
Okay. So I will leave it at that for now. Because I don't see that we've got anything there. I will encourage members of the commission, if they feel inclined on the issue, as always, to address your city council in the way that you see fit on the issue. And we will conclude that as a topic of business for this body. Okay. Thank you all. That was a good discussion. With that, I know the deputy director is out this evening. So we don't have a deputy director's report. Adam, do you have anything from a staff perspective that would qualify for anything of reporting nature?
Just a reminder that our next meeting is the 22nd of February and will be is is that date right, Deb, the 22nd? The 22nd of February and we'll be looking at the Mercer Island Beach Club and the allowed uses in the bee zone. So two things from the docket last year, yeah, coming back.
Great. We shall come in our beekeeper outfits. It's bee as in business zone.
Oh. I thought we had a zoning for bees on the island.
Okay, with that, if you have any planned absences that week, I do believe for those of you with kids, that's midwinter break. So if that poses a conflict and we have too many people out, please let the deputy city clerk know so that we can make arrangements if we need to, for some reason, change that meeting ahead of time. So with that, I don't have anything else. Is there anything for the good of the order from the rest of the commission? Hearing none. Thank you very much. Happy New Year and we will see you on the 22nd.